What news out there? Are you on?
I'm not. I'm watching.
What news out there? Are you on? I'm not. I'm watching. 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 It's 6:05. We're going to go ahead and get started now. Thank you all for coming. Obviously, this is a, this is the regular meeting of the Danville Board of Directors. It's Tuesday, October 7th. I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Clayton Cargill. I'm the board chair for this board. Sitting next to me this way is Dave Toll. He'll introduce himself and we'll pass this down.
Dave Toll, vice chair.
You've got to talk like eat the mic guys. Eat the mic.
Tim Thamborn, board member.
Kay Friede, board member.
Eric Hewitt, clerk.
Matt Foster, superintendent.
Sarah Welch, elementary principal.
Natalie Conway, secondary principal.
Mike Moriarty, assistant superintendent.
Hold over here for a second. All right, thank you all. What we have next, are there any additions or changes to this agenda? Can everybody hear that when I said that? Additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I'm going to, I'm going to move down to the minutes real quick. Minutes of September 2nd. There were some questions about the minutes of September 2nd and some corrections were sent in. We had a problem with the recording and the note taker couldn't hear the recording. We went back and I've added in some specific things about the cost of adding tuition students in, adding non-resident students who are not on the public school system in at the cost that was mentioned by several teachers during the course of that. Those have been added into the minutes. I submitted those minutes to the, it's listed in the minutes. I put it in the minutes. Let me go find the minutes.
Put the minutes in front of me. I'm going to make a motion to reject them.
That's, I think that's fine. I, so I added this stuff to the minutes last week after I got the, I forgot the information. It may not have come in the packet minutes. I can go find the minutes online. Hold on one second. So let me just go ahead and clarify that the minutes are not correct as they are in the packet, it seems like?
Mm-hmm.
And so you'd like to reject those minutes for tonight?
Make a motion to reject the minutes as presented.
All right, I'll present, I'll send my corrections around tomorrow. I updated them last week. I'll send them around tomorrow again. We'll get them out to everybody and I'll set them up for review. So we'll reject those minutes. We'll pass on the minutes of September 17th. It's a short meeting. We'll pass on the minutes of September 17th. Move it down. I'm going to move the reports downward because most of you are not here to talk about reports tonight. You're here to talk about something else. And so what I'd like to move down to, we'll go ahead and start the business of tonight and we'll move, we'll move down. We'll go to the business of tonight. And the first thing on the business of tonight, Peter Mantius is like, was presenting us a petition. Peter Mantius, are you here?
Hey Pete. Can you come up and present the petition?
Say your name for the microphone. Hold on. Try again.
Hello?
You have a petition for us?
The town clerk was obligated to give you the petition.
So we, we, we got the petition from you. I'd like to read the petition. Your petition states that we, the undersigned legal voters of the town of Danville, here by petition, the Danville School Board to warn a special meeting of the legal voters of the town of Danville to vote on the article presented below. And that, there's one article on here. It says Article 1. Shall the voters of the Danville School District authorize and direct the school board to close the existing high school by ceasing to operate grades nine through 12 at the Danville School as of June 30, 2026, and thereafter provide for the education of students in those grades by paying tuition to a public or approved independent school as authorized by 16 VSA 822. That's the petition you printed?
That is correct.
So that petition was given to the town clerk. The town clerk talked to the secretary of state, confirmed that there were 1,871 voter, registered voters in the town. They vetted your signatures. You needed to have 93.55 or 94 signatures. You have 124 confirmed signatures. So when she presented with that to us, we are required to act. Just want to check with you to make sure that you, that we're ready to do this. The date that I'm proposing, I'm proposing one date now and that is for the special meeting, a special election, a town meeting. And that date is December the 6th, 2025. The reason I'm proposing that date, it's within the 60 days of, it's 60 days from today. It is a day, it is a Saturday afternoon. That's the best time to not be in the way of the school and to get everybody who's in town the opportunity to be here. For those of you listening, that vote will be an in-person vote. Because of the way, the way the way Danville's chartered, this vote cannot be an Australian ballot vote. Australia, this town is chartered in such a way that the only votes we vote via Australian ballot are money measures and all other ballots are in-person measures. So we're going to have an in-person vote for that. Inside the in-person vote, if, if you want to go to a paper ballot on the in-person vote, only seven people have to ask for that. So that's a possibility. What we're going to have to be in this building, my proposed date is either 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM. Does anybody have a preference on 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM to get started?
Uh, this?
Sir?
Mr. Rathburn. Do you know of any events that's going to take place on the 6th of December? Okay, thank you. I don't want a big game to be somewhere in half the town.
So I think there might be, there might have been a basketball scrimmage scheduled and there's probably something scheduled for the next day. Mr. Brigham, no offense, I need the day. So I apologize for that, but I needed, I needed a day when I can get parents here and teachers here and town folk here. And I don't want to disrupt the school day. Is that day okay with you?
It is, absolutely.
Okay. So that's the day, that's 60 days from today. In the meantime, we're going to have two informational meetings. At the next informational meeting, I'm required to, we're required to warn this between 40 and 30 days publicly before. And then we're required to sign off on the warning as the school board. So the, the next regular meeting of the Danville School Board is the first Tuesday of November. It's 11/4. That's an election day. On that day, we'll plan a meeting prior to that meeting to sign off on the warrant. It will be an informational meeting as well for this vote. Subsequently, we'll have another meeting that is our regular scheduled meeting on the first Saturday, the first Tuesday of December as well, which is December the 2nd. And that's four days before the vote. That meeting will also have an informational meeting at the beginning of it to warn this again. So we'll have two informational meetings, have the vote on December the 6th. And that's my plan for action on this. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody else? Here on the board? Everybody over here? Okay. All right, thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
So are there any questions from anybody else about what just happened and why? About why we scheduled it? How we scheduled it? How petitions work? Barb?
So we have a question. How about?
And I have with 60 days to respond. They didn't request a town meeting vote. They could have said on the warning that the vote needed, they wanted it at town meeting, in which case then we could have put it in at town meeting. What they requested specifically is a town meeting to vote. So they've requested an additional town meeting and I'm legally required to do that within 60 days. Anything else about the situation? About what we're going to do?
This report, we can't see it again, the vote is taking place. Is that the final vote? Or will there be another vote after that for whether or not we close the high school?
So why do you think?
Need to do this.
Decision whether we keep this high school open or we close it.
The high school? Yes, ma'am.
That's December 6th.
Yes.
So how do you make that information out to the rest of the town?
I'm going to need help. That's the first thing. I'm going to need help. We're going to warn it. Our job is to warn it. Our job is to have informational meetings and our job is, it goes in the paper and I imagine we'll blast it out. I would rather have, I would not want to have 50 people voting on this. I would want to have hundreds and hundreds of people in this room voting on this, however they want to vote. I would not want this decision to be made by 50 people. Yeah, Bruce?
Yeah, well, even if they all propose a nice little slot, people have one nice little and then file a petition, we're giving requests to people. That's happening on the town, believing all of the first order filed.
That's something that we'll confirm with legal and put out in some sort of an information blast to make sure that that is correct. Eric?
But also, it's not finality because the authority to close grades at a school lies with the school board. And this vote, while important with a lot of heavy weight, is an advisory vote. It's your authority to make that choice as a school board. And while it might be not the most lawful thing to do, doing what's right for our kids and our community, messes with you, that's your responsibility.
I have that question posed to our attorney. I'm waiting on a response. I have that question posed to our attorney, but I'm still waiting on a response.
And the language, can we amend the language? And is it a point or does it have to be a new question altogether?
Um, the way that this question is warned and the way that the petition is signed, the petitioners have asked this question. So this question cannot be amended except at a town meeting. So in the, in the lead up to the town meeting, there's no amendment. It would require a new petition.
Is there a minimum or a minimum vote that we need? If you could have 20 people vote for their capacity now?
If they're telling me it's advisory, I don't think that 20 votes would, would be sort of something that, that would...
Is there a minimum or 230 or 50?
Not that I'm aware of, no ma'am. Any more technical questions here? Okay, so next on our agenda, we, we're going to do a public comment regarding this situation. And this is different than our normal public comments. Our normal public comments, we have questions that, that come up and people have, we have a public comment section for things not related to an agenda item. This is an agenda item and so there's going to be some opportunity for us to answer back if needed, but a lot of what's going to happen next, you're going to say, you're going to say things and we're going to let you say them. And we're going to have a three-minute time limit because this is warned on the agenda. Public input, I'm going to read our public comment statement that's been on our agendas that is our policy, just so that we know it. Public comment, "The purpose of this agenda item is to provide the general public with an opportunity to address the board on any matters not warned on the agenda. Neither the board nor the administration will discuss this matter beyond determining any necessary next steps, such as referring the matter to the appropriate individual group and/or offering clarification. In this state, in this case, the next steps are the vote. The next steps are the informational meeting, us seeking back information to get to you and the vote. The board may decide to add items raised in public comment to the future agenda, like that legal one. Public input on non-agenda items is limited at board meetings to stakeholders. The Danville Board defines stakeholders as students, guardians of students, school staff, taxpayers, and residents of Danville, Vermont. Non-stakeholders' comments are welcome via email. They can be emailed to me at clayton.cargill@ccsuvt.net." Those, those comments and other comments and the warning will all go up on a page that we'll monitor. If you have an email to send in and you want it seen, that's where we're going to put it. We've taken a couple already and we'll get them up on the page as soon as possible, as soon as we get this item up on the school website, on the CCSU website, to make people aware. This goes back to making people aware of it. We'll try to point everybody to this page and then get your voices heard as well because hearing our voices is not what we need here. We need to hear everybody's voices. So the tweak for this tonight is that comments should be directed at me, talking, you're talking to me, not talking to each other. And we're going to limit ourselves to three minutes each, but three minutes. And we're going to go as long as we need to, I think. And this is an agenda item, but in the spirit of public comment, we will allow each speaker to speak. Everybody gets their turn if they need it. Clarification's going to occur, but we want to limit the public, the public comments to three minutes. And we'll put a clock on you so that we can get everybody to get a turn. I don't know how many people signed up for public comment, but I imagine plenty. So are there any questions about that before we get into public comment? And I had this posed to me earlier by Natalie and Natalie had cards out front. And so rather than have a sign-up sheet and have the people that got here first get to talk first, we're going to randomize them. I have about 40 in my hands. I'm going to shuffle them up and pull one out. I don't know if you know what color you are, I'm not looking at the colors either. Sure?
I have different comments prepared based on when I might be able to speak. And so if someone is called to speak, can they be able to layer in the conversation?
Okay, you want, you want, you want to revert? You want reverse cuts? If you, reverse cuts. You want to, you don't want to go first. You want to go, no, no sooner than second. Okay, gotcha.
I just want to know if there's an opportunity if I say the law will see how to handle that.
I want...
I don't want to lose my opportunity.
Mr. Brigham, I want everybody to talk. I want everybody to talk. So if you don't want to go right when, right when I call your name and you say, put me at the back of the line, I'll put you at the back of the line. Danielle Turo is going to go first. Danielle Turo is the first name I called. Danielle Turo. So three minutes, Danielle, when you're ready.
Okay, this is not made for short people.
We were working on it all before when we got here. We moved, the cafeteria was going to be set up to do this, but we had more people than could be in the cafeteria. We've gone to the gym. There's an echo in the gym. All of the gyms, all the gym, audio equipment is pointed towards that way, toward the stands for the ballgames, for things like that. It's going to be difficult to hear. We can ask everybody to speak up. Everybody who's speaking can speak up.
Danielle Turo is gonna go first.
Danielle Turo?
Danielle Turo is the first name I called. Danielle Turo. So three minutes, Danielle, when you're ready.
Okay, this is not made for short people.
It's difficult to do it. Uh, we were working on it all before when we got here. We moved, the cafeteria was gonna be set up to do this, but we had more people than could be in the cafeteria. We've gone to the gym, there's an echo in the gym. All of the gyms, all the gym, audio equipment is pointed towards that way, toward the stands for the ballgames, for things like that. It's gonna be difficult to hear. Um, we can ask everybody to speak up. Everybody who's speaking can speak up.
Thank you. So I'd like to start saying that this is not about us versus them. This is about us, Danvillers or Bears, whatever you wanna call us. Our family moved from St. Jay to Danville 12 years ago. Our son was three years old at the time. We moved from St. Jay because we wanted our children to have a small-town high school experience filled with the community vibes and support, where they would be known by their name. We don't want the closure of the Danville High School. We want other smaller surrounding schools to join the Danville School and save our school. That is what we truly want. We have something good going on here worthy to be saved. But if that's not an option, we want to become school choice instead of being told to go to Hardwick or Blue Mountain. Becoming school choice is not our preference. School choice with their private schools are putting an end of small, local, public schools. They're overvalued and profiting from it. So no, school choice is not our family's preference, but neither Hardwick or Blue Mountain. I believe that forcing us to Hardwick or Blue Mountain will have a negative impact to our Danville community with a large exodus of young families causing property value decline, changing demographics, and much more. It will be, it will be the end of the Danville that we know and love. If we cannot remain as a whole, as Bears, then give us a choice. I understand that choice also brings so many negatives, but at least we will be able to remain and support in this community versus moving away.
Luke Robbins?
Dear Danville School Board members, we, stakeholders at Danville School, have noticed that the unapproved board meeting minutes, I haven't seen your approved ones yet, included some errors and omissions that should be reconsidered and corrected for accurate public records. At the September, at the September 2nd meeting, your board reached consensus that the original cost analysis presented failed to recognize a minimum of $490,000 in hidden costs that would have been incurred by Danville taxpayers for tuitioning 18 to 20 Danville resident students to St. Johnsbury Academy or Linden Institute. These student numbers were presented by Principals Natalie Conway and Dr. Welsh. Using these revised numbers, Eric Hewitt deftly corrected his original findings and estimated that the presented $200,000 deficit would shift to roughly a $300,000 surplus. Unfortunately, the Caldonia Record reported the cost analysis using the initial numbers provided before Hewitt's correction, which has misled the extended Danville School community to believe the original claim that it would be cheaper for the first time ever to close the high school. I'm gonna skip ahead because I fear I will run out of time. As we teach our students how to collect, analyze, summarize, and share data and information, we emphasize leaving preconceptions and biases out of their work, even if the data they collect or the research they conduct doesn't support their hypotheses, conjectures, or ideals. It's the duty of public boards, especially in education, to not only use accurate and complete information for making financial decisions, but also to make sure that the information disseminated to the community is correct. Also, when errors are found, they need prompt amendment, as Mr. Hewitt demonstrated. While the nine to 25 meeting minutes do have a link to the meeting video, we think it's fair to say that the majority of people who actually read the minutes will forego the video and reach the wrong conclusion about the cost analysis. Second and lesser error in the minutes reported that Taryn Robbins, a Danville teacher, not present at the meeting, made a public comment when it was actually Elena Robbins, a Danville student. Also mention of comments from Principals Conway and Dr. Welsh, as well as the correction by Mr. Hewitt, were omitted. We thank you for your time and service and further consideration of this matter. Respectfully, about 30 teachers in the building and paraprofessionals who are teachers, parents, alum parents, Danville residents, Danville taxpayers, and coaches.
So Luke, it may, thank you for that. And I thought I corrected those. It may be in the board's best interest to call the special meeting in between the two meetings so that we can address that directly, because I thought it was done tonight, but it's not. So we'll discuss that when we discuss upcoming meetings. And we'll see if it makes sense for the board to come in and do a special meeting to address specifically that error, which is mine.
Thank you.
Simon Fisher?
I'm speaking tonight as the parent of a tuition student. My son is in 11th grade and has benefited from attending Danville High School immensely. Academically, he's grown through hard work and determination. This work would not have been possible without the support he received from a dedicated group of highly skilled and invested teachers. He's taken two dual enrollment classes this year for college credit. He's on track to take more next year. These opportunities do not exist at all high schools. Socially and emotionally, he's become a person with a strong sense of who he is. He knows his strengths, and he knows the areas where he needs to work on himself. He's an active member of this school community. A large part of this growth came through his attendance at this school and his participation in the athletic programming. He knows he belongs. He knows the adults in this building are invested in who he is and wanna foster his personal growth and development. His friends and classmates have helped him along the way. They look out for one another as often as they give each other a hard time. I've long known that Danville School is a special place. I've seen that truth every day for 14 years as a staff member here. This school produces good people. For the last three years, I've been able to see it through a different lens, that as a parent. When my wife and I were looking to buy a home, we specifically looked in towns with school choice. We settled in St. Johnsbury so that our kids would have school choice. My son chose Danville School. He was under no pressure from me or my wife in choosing his high school. He wanted to be here because he knew what it offered him, a home. Most of us factor in education when we decide where we want to live. Our kids' education continues to be a factor when we decide to remain where we live. When folks decide to live in a town with a designated high school, they are also making a choice. To close this school would mean my son would need to transfer for his senior year, and it would totally upend his world. This petition seeks to remove Danville School as a choice for my family when we followed the rules and the model that was set forth for us to have that choice in the first place. It doesn't sit well with me, it's not right. I encourage everyone to remember the tuition students in this conversation. Their voices can't be heard through a vote on this. But we are absolutely a part of this community, and we chose to be here. Thank you.
Stacy Andre?
Hi, I'm Stacy Andre. I have nothing prepared, but I am a resident, and my kids went to Danville School as the elementary school and had a lovely experience. Uh, we had an opportunity to have our children go to St. Johnsbury Academy and got to have a wonderful experience. Uh, no shame or anything on either choice. Um, it was something that we chose to do for our family. Um, and I am here because while I don't want the school to close, that is not my intention. Um, I want the parents and the families of Danville to have a choice. Uh, so if that's something that is forced upon us, that they're going to force us to go to other schools that we don't want to go to, I want at least to have the option to have other parents have an opportunity to choose those schools that they feel best for their children and their education. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Pharaoh? You wanna go to the back of the line, or you wanna pass? Gary passes. Mark Tucker? Mark asked for nine minutes, I talked him down to three.
It's really hard, this time limit. Hi, I've seen this movie before. Three times in the seven years I served Cabot School as superintendent, one or more families decide that they want their resident student to attend a different high school, and under the flag of choice, set out to close the local high school. Arguments over cost with pro-choice parents saying it has to be cheaper to tuition out because they don't understand school finance are used to gin up support in the town. Under the terms of the current funding formula and following careful, transparent evaluation that showed otherwise, these folks remained impervious to factual data about the true cost, in other words, the tax impact, of open choice versus continued operation. Advocates want what they want. Cabot's calculus always proved that it was cheaper to operate despite having a much smaller high school enrollment than Danville. I understand the funding formula may change, but Act 73 does not move forward unless and until the legislature first agrees to governance changes that are still under debate and will not be resolved before the petition vote is held. Even then, any decided changes will not be in effect for a couple of years at best. This is a critical issue because there are significant unresolved questions that cannot be answered before December this year. Please keep in mind that Act 73 did not decide anything. It only created a framework for answering questions that the legislature will take on in the next session. A big question related to choice is how to reconcile the proposed foundation formula with the cost of tuition. At the end of the session, we heard speculative numbers of a flat grant around $15,000 per student, but I have yet to see an explanation of how that will be reconciled when a receiving school's tuition is much higher. For example, in 2024, the academy and ally tuition rates were approaching $25,000 per student, and that excludes additional special education costs. How will the funding formula address this discrepancy? Will taxpayers be forced to make up the difference, and if so, how? Under the current funding formula, with no ability to influence these tuition rates, the only thing the local boards and the choice towns I served could do was raise taxes or cut spending on the elementary programs. Deciding in December 25 to close the high school in 2026 without first knowing how we're gonna fund our students' education is a risky move. This is just one of many uncertainties facing every community in the state of Vermont as we wait for the legislature to finish its Act 73 work. One last thought. Choice is a two-way street. Closing a high school in 2026 may offer choice to those who wish to send their kids elsewhere, but it takes choice away from the families who live in Danville because they want their kids to learn in a smaller community high school. It also takes choice away from those families whose kids chose to come to Danville from other communities. The impact of rushing this decision now will have a significant impact on the students and families who want to be here in numbers exceeding those few who are desperate to leave and on the staff at Danville School. The decision should be based on fact, not...
Hi, Mark, your three minutes is up.
Last sentence?
All right. Nobody else gets a last sentence but Mark Tucker?
This decision should be based on fact, not selfishness, emotion, and misleading interpretations of what might happen.
So the new cutoff time is 3:13. Everybody gets 3:13, to be fair. Bella Stevens and Ash Bedard?
Bella and I are currently sophomores at Danville High School. Before I begin, I would like to make it clear that I value and respect all of the teachers here at Danville School. They are the best part of our school. I have attended Danville School since preschool, and the years leading up to now have been difficult because of the behavior from students who are not held accountable for their consistent, inappropriate, and destructive behaviors. For instance, on October 6th, there were 88 occurrences of inappropriate and disrespectful behaviors from multiple different students in a 15-minute class period. 36 of those instances were from one student. Other than constant reminders to stop disrupting, the student was not held accountable for their actions and was allowed to stay in class and continue to be disruptive. That's one of many instances that has happened in that classroom and many more. If we have a choice on where we wanna go to school, it would give the kids who have experienced the same consistent, undisciplined behavior as I did, a way to go somewhere else where they could get a better education. To disagree with everybody here, we feel that closing the school could benefit the Danville community because other schools have more to offer in educational and extracurricular activities. Younger students who wanna take classes they're interested in that this school doesn't offer wouldn't be able to if they could not drive themselves there, since our school doesn't provide transportation for that. A personal reason is that discipline is not enforced throughout the school, like disruption in classes, not following school policy, or bullying and harassment. An ongoing issue currently in the school is funding. Low-income families who have to pay fees in order to, for their kid to engage in new learning opportunities such as field trips and events can be difficult. For example, tomorrow, there is a college fair field trip at St. Michael's in Burlington. Many students signed up who were interested but had to pay a fee of $9 to cover the lunch there. All these issues within the school are reasons why we vouch for it to close. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I assume some of this stuff's gonna get addressed? Closing principles? Did you hear that? Thank you. Jordan Sullivan-Stevens?
Good evening. My name is Jordan Sullivan-Stevens. I've been going to Danville School since I was three years old. And in those almost 11 years, I have made many personal connections with past, present, and hopefully future teachers. Connections that in a larger school system would be nearly impossible to form. Now, I am not a student who struggles academically, but the thought of a newer and bigger classroom setting makes me question my academic future. Seeing as I have gotten above-average grades my whole life in a small classroom setting, having to imagine being in a class with nearly twice the amount of kids now makes me really doubt my future. Not only that, but the possibility of being homeschooled because of no other schools being close enough to home that my family does not have to pay for also makes me really nervous about my future. Taking out the social anxiety aspect, I know a lot of kids, myself included, have. The jump from everyone being noticed and having real, personal connections with everyone in class to not being noticed as much because of new teachers and new kids would shake anyone. All my life, I have depended on our high school to get me where I want to be in life and recognized by colleges I want to hopefully attend, not only academically, but athletically as well. Since I was in kindergarten, I've played sports at Danville. Now, I do basketball, track, and I'm currently one of three captains on the first volleyball team here ever. On top of that, my family has been attending Danville and has graduated from here since it was founded. Look almost anywhere and you will see the Carsons and the Webster's. And most known in our very own...
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Eric Hutchins.
Thank you for having this meeting. First, I'd like to clarify that we are all meeting here under false pretenses tonight. Only two people have promoted this idea that if we don't close this school, our kids will not be afforded choice in the future. Act 73 has been passed, and the idea that if we don't instantly close our school, that in some future consolidation, our kids won't have access to independent schools is a falsehood promoted by Senator Beck and by his colleague at HHS Academy, Peter Mantius. As you pointed out in a recent Seven Days article written by Allison Novak, Mr. Cargill, you were unable to verify from any other legislature that that was in the offing in changes in the future legislative session. And even if we close the school now and this goes through, there's no guarantee in a future law that kids will have that choice. If we close the school now, in fact, and then Act 73 does not go through, if the legislature does not ratify a map, which is a distinct possibility, then we will have acted prematurely, and we will be forced to pay the tuitions dictated by the independents, which will then not be under control of a foundation formula, and we will be acting fiscally irresponsibly because currently those tuitions are $24,000, $25,000 a year, and they can raise them to $30,000 or $40,000 or $50,000 if they want to, and the voters here would have no control over that. But most importantly, this is an excellent school, and there are fantastic staff, teachers, and students here who want this school to remain open. They've dedicated their lives to this school, and this school is the heartbeat of this community. To close this high school wouldn't lower anybody's property's taxes. In fact, you'd be in severe risk of increasing them, but what you would do is redirect funds and resources from this community to other communities. It's absurd. We're here under false pretenses. Already, the people who have promoted this idea that closing the school will somehow benefit our community, Senator Beck is under multiple ethics investigations for his violations of the state code of conduct in using his authority as a legislator to promote benefits for his employer, St. J's Academy. It's reprehensible, and I think the voters are going to see that right away. And as Mr. Mantius said, I hope everyone shows up, is well-informed, and votes to keep this school open. It deserves to stay open. It's the heart of this community. Thank you.
Joanna, I don't know who that is. No, all right. There we go. Thank you, ma'am. Just say your name correctly in case I did not.
I'm Johanna Doty Sidel.
Thank you.
I'm the mother of a fifth grader. We moved specifically to come to the Danville School, and we moved from Oregon. I'm the graduate of a K-12 program myself. I only went to high school. And I knew as a high schooler, looking at the people who were my friends who'd gone since kindergarten, how much more well-adjusted they were, how much happier they were, and how much more invested in their education they were than I was at that age. So as a mother, I was looking specifically for a K-12 program that my daughter could graduate from, and she has thrived here. I am a special educator, and I work in Newport. I drive 50 miles each way, that's 100 miles, round trip every day, so that my child can go to this school and thrive. I really believe in the value of a public education. If this school closes, Danville will not have access to a free public education. I think that's terrible, and I really implore you all to fight for my child's right to continue to thrive with the guidance and love and care, expertise, and excellence that she is doing so well with. If she does not have that opportunity, I don't want to live in this community as lovely as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How many are on the Zooms? How many hands are up on the Zooms? I can't see it. Okay. We'll stick with the cards.
David Wood. You won't have a problem hearing me. I'd like to address this to the Danville community. I would like to take a few moments to talk to you about this petition. I am speaking as a person that is not trying to save their job. I'm 59 years old, near retirement, and have renewed my license for the very last time. I am speaking to you because this petition is flat-out wrong. And I know it's wrong because I did something that the politician behind it did not do, and that was talk to the kids, or even talk to some people here in the community. Let me talk about Danville School and why it's important to hold on to it. Believe it or not, Vermont is a leader and a model for public schools in the United States. Danville is no exception. We have sent kids to MIT, University of Richmond, UVM, Dartmouth, to name a few. We have a prestigious military history of students going to serve in various places. I have one student that graduated from here a few years ago, sold her business for a half a million dollars, and she's only in her 20s. If that's not success, I don't know what is. And for a small school, our sporting program is pretty much unmatched as far as I'm concerned. And despite what you hear about small schools, we do offer a quality education. And about this petition, the politician that is behind it, in my opinion, is a coward, at worst, a bully. And congrats for scaring our kids from the seventh grade on. If Bernie Sanders can come here and talk to this school and take questions from the kids, so can you. And it's a shame that you have not. But instead, this politician ran behind in an effort to shut down the school with lies. The school is in no danger of closing under the new law if it closes at all. Take the time to make an informed decision. Do not be taken in by fear or that you will lose your school. Let me also be clear, the St. J's Academy and ally are private schools. They don't have to take your kids. And how do I know? Because we've been giving kids from those two schools here at Danville a second chance, a first chance, because they couldn't make it at a bigger school for the 27 years I've been here. Finally, as an historian, I can tell you that no Vermont town has increased in size or prospered after closing their secondary school. So don't fall into their lies. As a matter of fact, it's had the opposite effect. And if you haven't learned anything yet, taxes never go down. They only go up. In closing, working at Danville has been the highlight of my teaching career. I could have moved on to other schools. I've been offered bigger schools, more money, but I chose because I know what this school means and what it means to the community and how special it is. So if it closes right away without careful thought and working with the current high school and middle school students, I promise down the road, you will regret such a decision. And I'm not talking to the school board. I'm talking to the entire community. Secondary education is what you want to hold on to.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Ari. Ari, I can't say your last name. So first, Ari, say your last name for me.
Morages. Thank you.
I still can't say it, Ari. Try again. Morages.
Okay. Friends, teachers, family, and whoever else it may concern, my name is Ari Morages. For who of you that do not know me, I am 14. I moved to Vermont July of 2017. Me and my family are currently in the process of moving to Danville. I came to Danville School with only two full years ago in seventh grade, and even though I might not have as much years under my belt as some other students, Danville School has left a lasting impression on me. Now, when I first started here, the work being done to have Danville High School shut down, I was worried where me and my friends would go next. A worry that some of you disagree with and some of you here share with me. Regardless of that, I would like to share with you some of the reasons why you should vote no to closing Danville High School. A, transportation difficulties. If and when Danville High School closes, many, if not all, students will have to commute a half-hour plus to get to school and back. Because I am living in Barnett right now, I know the toll that a long morning commute can take on families and students. Depending on where you live and where you plan on going, there will most likely not be an option for a school bus. B, less individualized education. The small class sizes here at Danville provide a rare opportunity to have all the teachers know you by name. Do you want someone who doesn't even know how to say your last name making the decision where you go to high school?
Got me there, bud.
I don't think so. I don't think so. And it's helpful to know their last name when they're teaching you. And at a school like the Academy, the median graduating class size is 170 people. That is around 48.5% of our entire student population pre-K through 12. A larger class size would squash out people's opportunities to strive and take advantage of the opportunities presented to them by the state of Vermont. Relationship and attachments. Due to our smaller school sizes, Danville students are a tight-knit community, and if the time comes when they have to decide where we go next, many students may end up without their friends and have no one to support them as they transition into their new chapter of their lives. I know that this is one of, if not the biggest concern amongst Danville students, myself included. I hope this letter has opened some of your eyes to the many issues closing Danville High School would present. I hope that if and when this comes to a vote, I have helped you make the best choice, not only for you but the entire Danville community. Thank you very much.
You got it. I'm not going to let anybody else add any names to this. We're going to end it after we get done with these. I think there are people putting their names in there back there. Stacy Welch. Yes. Stacy Welch. Stacy Welch to pass. Lance Horn.
Lance Horn, Danville resident. Put three of my sons through the school. There's no doubt we have a great staff here. I put three sons of my through the school. Served a little on the building committee, have seen a lot of the numbers, and was wondering if the board would be able to provide to this committee, if not tonight, at the informational meetings regarding the unprecedented decrease in youth population in the state of Vermont and the trajectory that the nonprofit that we hired to look at this area from a pupil standpoint, what that looked like as a future projection, if you'd be willing to share that.
Sure. At an informational meeting?
That's fine.
Sure. So the...
At the informational meetings, yes.
I think we should. I think we can.
Okay. That's all I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
He's referring to some work we had done a couple of years ago, and we have that work. We can access that, and we'll have it at the informational meetings. I don't have it right in front of me tonight. Barb Fontaine. Do you need me to bring you the microphone, Barb? Can you make it? You want me to bring you the microphone? All right, good.
This is very emotional for me. I'm alumni of the school. I got a great education in this school. I had great jobs from this school. I have a question for each of you board members, and I want an answer from each one of you. Mr. Hewitt, I don't know you personally, but are you for closing the school? Yes.
Right now, I've written a letter that outlines my position. I'll share it later, but my position is that I want clarity on what our actual options are from the redistricting committee. This question for me is not just about closing the school or not closing the school. This question is, how is the redistricting committee viewing us, Danville, in our current situation? When I moved here, there was a high school. I plan on my son going to high school, but I would like the clarity from the redistricting committee of what... recognition that Danville is very unique in Vermont. We're the only school in the CTE region that has a public high school that doesn't have a CTE and a public high school, and we're the only public high school in our CTE region. And that is a really, really weird place for us to be because we have these academies right next to us. So long and short of it is, I don't have a really quick answer, a really quick answer for you because I don't know what my options are, and I don't know exactly what the consequences of each choice are at this point. And I would very much like clarity from the redistricting committee for that.
So we're being polled here, and I don't think this is a three-minute comment thing. You're polling us. It's fine. We're going to let it go.
Never. Never. I say never.
One second. Okay.
My answer is never.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think this would be a conversation if it weren't for what the redistricting committee... I don't think that there's any reason for us that we would look at this if that wasn't a question. And I think, you know, I'm very much in the camp of, we don't have all the information that we need in order to make an informed decision here. I do think it's important that we're thinking about this and thinking ahead to what might possibly happen. Did I foresee this at all? No. Do I think that this school should close? No. But do I think that we need to be prepared for what might be coming down the road? Yes. And hopefully, maybe this conversation happening and maybe the fact that we are right now a focal point in the state might push some people to push out some more information about what the future holds.
I hope this is the best civics lesson that our students and our entire community has in the next 10 years. I am absolutely in favor of a free, accessible, public education. When I bought a house in Danville, I recognized that there were a number of choice towns in the area, and I chose to buy a house in Danville. And I feel like this is a really important conversation to have. And that is a really, really weird place for us to be, because we have these academies right next to us. So, long and short of it is, I don't have a really quick answer, really quick, quick answer for you, because I don't know what my options are. And I don't know exactly what the, the consequences of each choice are at this point. And I would very much like clarity from the redistricting committee for that.
So, we're being polled here, and I don't think this is a three-minute comment thing. You're polling us. It's fine. We're going to let it go.
Never. Never. I say never.
One second. Okay.
My answer is never.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think this would be a conversation if it weren't for what the redistricting committee. I don't think that there's any reason for us that we would look at this if that wasn't a question. And I think, you know, I'm, I'm very much in the camp of, we don't have all the information that we need in order to make an informed decision here. I do think it's important that we're thinking about this and thinking ahead to what might possibly happen. Did I foresee this at all? No. Do I think that this school should close? No. But do I think that we need to be prepared for what might be coming down the road? Yes. And hopefully, maybe this conversation happening and maybe the fact that we are right now a focal point in the state might push some people to push out some more information about what the future holds.
I hope this is the best civics lesson that our students and our entire community has in the next 10 years. I am absolutely in favor of a free, accessible, public education. When I bought a house in Danville, I recognized that there were a number of choice towns in the area, and I chose to buy a house in Danville. And I feel like this is a really important conversation to have. I feel like it's based on rumors and conjecture right now, and it's a knee-jerk reaction to something that sounds very scary that we have been threatened by, which is the potential to lose options and the potential to lose choice. And right now, that is not real. Could it be real in the future? Possibly. Would have to go through an entire legislative process for that to happen. And all of the information I have right now is that no one knows what will actually happen. People who are attending all of the legislative redistricting committee sessions, they don't have answers yet. And to have a vote with real information feels like we're not really having a vote with real information on December 6th. Personally, I would say not right now.
So, no ma'am, I do not want the high school to close. No ma'am, I do not want the high school to close. Very specific, very specifically, I do not want the high school to close. And very specifically, in this case, I was given information that turns out to, I cannot corroborate this information. I paraded this information around town, and I told people this information, and I feel lied to in this situation, and I feel like I'm part of the problem here. But to make it clear, I do not want this high school to close, and I do not want my son's high school career, and he's going to be a senior next year, interrupted for the convenience of some people going into the 9th grade. I do not want that.
I know you're all talking about this Act 73.
Yes, ma'am.
What is Act 73?
If we get through the public comment section, then we can go back and start discussing it. But, but very specifically, this is sweeping, rapidly, rapidly formed legislation that came through last year that put a different funding formula on all education and then added in a bunch of other sweeping changes in words, but nothing was all the way done. And so we're waiting for district maps to come out. And there's a group of people on district maps, and there's a group of people on how things are getting represented, and none of those answers are here.
I would like to ask all you school board members to speak, spend as much time making our school better than trying to close our school. And the people that signed the petition, Soviet is a free country, but Bruce, I would be the first one to sign your petition.
Thank you, Barb. Melissa Wetherell. She passing? She's going to pass. Glania Rain. Passing tonight. So for those of you that are passing tonight, if you want to prepare statements for the next one, again, we're November the 4th, we're going to go again, we'll do the same sort of thing, alternating, December, the meeting in December as well. If you needed time to prepare some words and practice them, you're going to get an opportunity to speak again. We don't want people to pass just because of the timber of the room. If you have something to say, say it. If you don't, if you don't want to say it out loud, then take the time, write it down, email it in, and get it posted. People need to know what you're saying. People need to know what you're thinking, regardless of what you're thinking. Stacy Edgar.
I'm Dr. Stacy Edgar, Danville taxpayer, registered voter, parent, and high school science teacher at Danville High School. This petition to close the school is a farce. It is based on false assumptions circulated to escalate fear in our community. There's no urgency here. Let's look at the facts. Last spring, as H454 was being drafted, I personally spent countless hours watching the open meetings to get a pulse on how H454, now Act 73, was being crafted and the thinking and mindset of the legislators involved. Here's my takeaway. Act 73 built in many protections for small rural schools like ours, so this bill would not preemptively shut us down. It recognizes the need for public options in sparse rural areas like our own, and based on our specs, we may be recognized as small by necessity upfront, eliminating class-size requirements and providing extra funding to help support our own work. Even if we're not recognized as small by necessity initially, there's a pathway to it. That pathway would take an additional five to six years before anything would be decided. I'm happy to discuss details with anyone interested. But again, based on Act 73 language, there is no urgency here. Members of the redistricting task force have also mentioned that at multiple meetings, their task has been too large and important to rush and is unlikely to be accomplished in the timeline given. The chair of the task force is constantly reminding the committee that their motto is "do no harm." And with elections in November 2026, things could take a very different course. Again, no urgency. If you want to hear it from someone that doesn't have a conflict of interest like Scott Beck or myself, then read the 7 Days Vermont article from October 1st, Rural School Boards' Field Pressure Amid Ed Reform Speculation. Legislators who actually drafted much of the current language in Act 73 speak up in that article. Peter Conlin, quote, "Trying to predict the future of Act 73 is a fool's errand." Quote, "Any decisions a school board makes now could be rendered moot." Quote, "Closing and going to school choice could be quite temporary." Leanne Harple, quote, "Anything the school board chooses to do now can be undone." She continues to say, quote, "To instill fear in people at this point is really premature." When this bill passed, it was to protect public education. And now, to try to scare public schools into closing, knowing they would probably send students to private schools, it doesn't sit right with a lot of people." End quote. Our rural public schools are a commodity to our region and the best or only choice for many of our children. Please don't remove that choice based on fears generated from one person. Scott Beck has been working for months to pull the wool over the eyes of our school board members. Don't let him fool you. There is no urgency. Thank you.
Three left. Katie White.
Hello, everyone. I'm a parent and a resident. Louder, sorry. And I'm also an alum of Danville. I know that it would be really sad for this community if this high school closed, but I also think that just because something is sad doesn't mean that we have to ignore it or shouldn't at least have these conversations. So, thank you for the school board for letting us have these conversations and having more community meetings. I would like to remind everybody that this is a vote, and that means that every registered voter gets to have their voice heard, and I believe in that. So, keep that in mind. None of us know how the vote would turn out, and each, understand that registered voters are not the only people that have stakeholders in this school, so that is hard. I wish that there was a way we could somehow get every stakeholder to be involved in this, and hopefully the community meetings will do that. But I encourage everybody to participate in the vote, because that is the best way for us to know what the majority of this town wants to do, and we shouldn't be afraid of a vote. Thank you.
Brigham. Mr. Brigham. Just only two left. You want to go before or after Connor?
Good evening, everybody. I have a lot of feelings about this. I've been here for my entire life. I certainly don't think that this is the right thing to do. I ought to shut the school down, and this petition is very dumb, to say the least. I'd like to talk about our community that our school has built here. It's a very strong community that we have, and it's been a major part of the Danville experience for kids past, future, now. Our classes would not stay together and would be separated if we shut down next year for my senior year. None of the kids will be able to go to the same school together anymore. We'll all be separated and pushed out to different parts of the state and whatnot. Our school offers many things for kids, like one-on-one situations and some kids that won't be able to get that experience at schools like the Academy, who have upped the prices for kids like special needs that need the help there. So, there's that. I've made friends here since kindergarten and have been able to stick with them through the school for my entire life now, and now it's coming down to, I might not be able to go to school with them next year. And that could be the last time I see these kids for a very long time after. Another thing I'd like to talk about is scholarships. Our school offers many scholarships here that at other schools, we would not be given the chance to get, especially the junior class itself right now. Our senior year, there's so many scholarships that Danville offers that all these other schools will not be able to give us at that point, trying to adapt to the situations there. Some kids will, like the green and gold one especially, many kids here in my class have been striving to get that for years here. And our classes are small, yes, but that gives chances for kids to exceed in ways that they can't at the Academy with these 300 classes of students and stuff. How do you need that? My other note is, ah, I made a deal. Sports, that's another thing. I'm not going to be able to go play basketball at the Academy. I might not be able to go play soccer. Other kids in my class won't be able to play tracker or something like that, baseball, softball, aren't be able to give, or have those chances there. There's that. Another thing that, none of the kids at the school knew about this happening till this week, until Mr. Warren, Shannon, Ms. Conway, Brigham went and told our classes what was happening. So I feel like that should definitely be output to the school and the students here through 7th, 12th grade. And they should be able to have a say in what their future is like. Another thing is that I have a friend that grew up in big cities that, or a few, that's... Okay, okay. I'll, I'll end it there.
Wrap it up, bud.
I'll end it there.
So, my intention, just, my intention was that after I had did this card, I wouldn't do any more cards, but you and I have spoken a couple of times about your situation with your teaching, and... I'm, I'm going to go ahead and let her go. It's, it, so that, you're going to get to go after Mr. Brigham.
So, there was a reason for the request that I made earlier about when to go and whether or not things may be cleared up during previous comments. And I guess, you know, one of the things that I had every intention of asking, and Clayton, I'm just going to ask you directly right now, does your newfound position mean that you are still willing to plant your flag in Danville?
My position's not newfound.
Last board meeting, you said you could no longer plant your flag in Danville. I quote, it's in the, it's in the meeting, it's in the minutes, it's in the video. It's just a yes or no question.
So, Danville, I'm Danville, I gotta try to decide for Graham. And so, this is, this is my, my other guy, and so I'm, I have to tell... Nolan, Danville, Graham, I gotta let Graham make a decision.
So Graham gets to make a decision. We have school choice. I guess I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, so, I'm going to start there. My name is Jason Brigham. I'm a Danville resident who wants lower taxes. I'm a parent of successful alumni. I'm a parent of current students who do not want to lose their school. I'm a high school math teacher who loves and wants to keep his job, and the coach of championship-winning basketball teams that bring the community together on cold winter nights. Those games won't exist if a few selfish residents get their way. Eric Hewitt, you cherry picked data for this presentation last month that supported your bias that it would be more expensive to keep Danville School open, or that it would be more expensive to keep us open than to tuition all of our residents to other schools. Your lies were reported in the Caledonian Record as fact, misleading our community and helping to fuel the petition to close the school. It's since been made very clear that closing the high school will lead to higher taxes. Clayton, you were quoted as saying, "I can no longer plant my flag in Danville," at the last board meeting. I believe our kids deserve to be surrounded by adults, including board members, who believe in the very school that they're making decisions for. I would like for our other three board members to go on record as either supporting the high school or not. If you are not in full support of our high school and are advocating for its closure or planning on sending your kids elsewhere, you should remove yourself from the board or be removed. People, you have a choice. You have a choice. Every adult who lives in Vermont should be aware of what is known here as school choice. When I moved back to Vermont with a young 15-year-old, with a young son 15 years ago, I was very purposeful of where I chose to live. I held off buying a home in Danville until my family was very comfortable with our choice being Danville High School. To those who wish to have your choice, you already do. You already do. The surrounding communities are full of options available to you. Or, you can pay to have your kid attend the school that you want them to attend. That is your choice. You have a choice. Taking away my choice and the choice of others to attend Danville High School because you want a different option but don't want to pay for it is simply unacceptable.
Jason, Jason. Time. So, to, to address your question, if my son Graham decides to go to, to go to the St. James John's Bay Academy or the Institute, I'll pay the money, stay in my house, and step off the board.
Thank you.
Hey.
I got a lot more to say. We'll see things later.
One more.
To put it a little lower with Mr. Brigham. Allison Despathy, resident and a mother of Molly Despathy, who's a freshman in high school. Two things to say. So, one, I have three children. My oldest attended Danville, cranked it out in three years for high school. We homeschooled. He loved it. It was great. He's electrician. He actually has two kids. I'm a grandma. It's crazy. My second son homeschooled through sophomore year. As a junior, he is a big soccer player, playing down in North Carolina right now, and he wanted to go to the Academy. That was the best option for him. So, he paid $7,000 of his own after working at Second Chance Farm in North Danville, and we are still paying for it, and I probably will be paying for it for three or four more years, but that was the best choice for him. My daughter Molly homeschooled. Now she is a freshman, and she's loving it, and the teachers are amazing, just like they were for Miles. And I think what we come to here is that parents and children need choice, and obviously there's so many people here who love this school, and rightly so, and for good reason. And there's also amazing parents and people here who want their children to have another experience, a different experience that they think is best. I do want to also say, one, the democratic process and free speech is alive and well in Danville, even though the federal government is unraveling, so we should all be happy for that. Two, Senator Beck, I feel like has been very greatly and wrongly abused in any conversation that I have had with him or others. He has been very clear, "We do not have the answers. Everything is hypothetical right now. All they are doing is trying to do redistricting maps." So I think we need to keep that in mind and not blame him, even though he is obviously feeling the brunt of this. The last thing is a proposal. In current Vermont statute, you can, as a board, decide if someone comes to you and says, "I would like my child to go to the Academy," you could, as a board, say yes, even though you are operating a public school. That is acceptable. So because we know nothing about Act 73, and it is all hypothetical, and we don't want to lose this school, and we want people and families to have a choice and not move out, I wonder, could there be another option on the ballot for one year where we say, "If a family comes to us as the board, yes, we will grant them the option to say, 'We're going to the Academy. We're going to LI.'" So that would be for existing high school and 8th grade, and it could just be one year. I know my time is up, but I think just a proposal to consider so that we can wait and see what's going to happen with Act 73, if anything. Thank you.
So just to clarify that question, that specific action is what killed Concord High School, trying to please both sides? It's illegal under Act 46. It's illegal under Act 46. It's illegal under Act 46. It's, that, the, the specific action of funding tuition students and operating a high school is illegal under Act 46, as I understand it. I'll clarify that with a lawyer, but that's my understanding of the situation. I'm through with the cards. Thank you all for your input tonight. We're gonna, we're gonna have additional informational meetings coming up on November the 4th, again on December the 2nd, leading up to the vote on December the 6th. Those are the days that were planned. The informational meetings will probably be formatted similarly to this as we ascertain more information. We'll get the more information, we'll present more information. I'll get the stuff that Lance asked about, that we got from a nonprofit group a couple of years ago as part of the building committee. Get some clarifications on the questions that we had from the people that asked them, and hopefully have some better answers for everybody that we needed. If you have anything that you want to submit, submit it to the school. Now, what, Kay's passing me a note, there's some, where's Molly? Molly, somebody pass me a note, Molly. So, yeah, remember you told me on the, anyway. So, Oxbow Friday night, 4:30 to 6:30, there is a meeting, a public forum of the redistricting committee where they're gonna discuss some specifics, but not maps. But you can ask some questions in Oxbow if you're not busy on a Friday night at 4:30. And that is this Friday.
That is the geographically closest of any of the four public feedback forums. Oxbow this Friday, there are three more. One is in Rutland, one is in Winuski, and one is somewhere else, but Oxbow is the closest.
I think we should, okay. If there's anybody on Zoom that is still sticking around that wants to say anything, there's 32 people on there, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized to speak. That's far. I see no hands. So from there, we're gonna move on from this portion and go to our regular meeting business. If you guys, you guys wanna take a break? Anybody wanna take a break? I could use a glass of water. Take a five-minute break and then we'll get back to our regular meeting. If that's okay?
Two years, that's when you wanna take a picture, that's my thing, two years.
We'll see three, four, five.
All right, we're back in order. Jason, we're gonna meet, we're gonna go back to our meeting, okay? That's one of all of ours. So what we're gonna go back to is the superintendent's report. We'll start with the superintendent's report. Where, where we last left off, we didn't have a finance director, we had interviews coming. Do you wanna start, tell us about that?
Sure. We are in the final stages of making an offer to our potential new CFO, so I don't want to make anything official yet until we have something to officially report, but we're making good progress and we're pretty happy about that. Any other questions?
Anything else from the board on the superintendent's report? All right, cool. Student services report, student services is not here, the report's in the packet, I'll have to look at it tomorrow, I was busy today. Any questions for that? Principals report, ladies, do you have anything to tell us? I see the class counts are in there, appreciate the class counts. Anything you need to tell us in the report for right now?
Um, I think the only thing that...
It's okay if the answer's no.
Holy cow. Um, there's less people to bounce it off of. That we wanted to, or that I wanna highlight is our winter wellness program. That's a super important program for our pre-K to 12. We're still navigating Burke. They have significantly raised their prices and said they would honor last year's prices, but we still haven't seen that on paper and stuff, so we're navigating whether or not our kids are gonna be able to participate in skiing and snowboarding. Mike, wanna shout out Mike and some of our area school districts.
Oh, Kindred Kids.
Kindred Kids, like I'm seeing you. We've had a lot of people advocating for the impact that that's had and that it's gonna have on our kids this year, but it is really important to our students. And so we're hoping that we will get confirmation in writing that, that, that those prices will all be honored and that we can budget appropriately for next year.
Do you have anything else? So this is, as is mentioned in the report, there are community members working on it. Come up and say it into the microphone.
Uh, we also...
What she said for the people that are still zoomed in.
Uh, we also wanna highlight that conferences are gonna be at the end of the month, and so that communication is going out to families. We had highlighted some happenings at elementary and middle and high school. I am working with the finance department to update our endowments and scholarships. We have a, an old blue binder across the street at the SU office, and so Cassie Vogel, our amazing admin assistant, myself, Ellie Keefe, and the finance office are gonna be combing through that as we update those, and we look forward to giving away more and bigger scholarships come June. There's also an open letter to the board from me linked in the principals' report that I'm not gonna read tonight, but will be accessible for all of you, and if anyone has any issues accessing it, please let me know. It states, "My vehement support of public education, including this high school."
And that will move to the, to the page with the warning, with the, with the announcement of the vote and the warning. That letter will be on that page. Any questions for the principals from the board? We're gonna go back one, one bite to the superintendent from Eric.
From Tommy on how the heating controls are going for the school, please.
Eric's asking for an update from facilities on the heating control system that's going in.
Yeah, I can tell you that it's not on yet.
Guys, we're talking into the microphone, we're talking into the microphones tonight. Everybody talking to the microphone still.
Oh, I'm sorry, the heat is not on yet. We're planning, probably will need to turn it on next week, so we're excited to see how they will work out too.
Any questions for the superintendent, any questions for the principals from board? Hearing none. We're gonna move down. So Matt, the next thing on the agenda for tonight is the, let's see, it's a teacher contract, FY '26 through FY '28 teacher contract that was negotiated. The negotiations finished up last June. We finished up negotiating, negotiating council, and the CCA finished up last June. Finished up, we waited through the summer, they reviewed them, they went through legal, they're going through the ratification process now, and I'm here to present that to the board and ask for their vote to approve the teacher contract from FY '26 through FY '28. The specific ramifications, Matt's gonna put up on the screen for us. Specifically, we covered in a series of probably 23 meetings with the CCA, and this includes all of the schools, all of the bargaining units, including the Cabot Union and the CCA Union, all of them. Our goals going into this were to get common rights and responsibilities for all of CCSU staff, which we didn't have, we've been working toward for years. Additionally, to get common salary scale for all of the staff across the board. It was, it's been very, very difficult across the board because Cabot started with the lowest number in this particular stretch, which you'll see in some of this is that Cabot, we're still trying to catch Cabot up, and so by the end of the third year, Cabot will be on the same salary scale as all the rest of us, but for right now CCSU and Twinfield, CCSU Legacy is what we call the five schools that were in CCSU before the two other schools joined in, they are all in the same salary scale. Different also was that Twinfield wasn't on the same day schedule, and so we're, they're leaking in 10 minutes every year until by the third year, they're on the same classroom schedule so that we have all the same rights and responsibilities in our, in our buildings and among ourselves. We clarified several things around education, we clarified several things around extended education, rights and responsibilities, safe work environment, things like that as part of this. But specifically, the money, we had, we went a little further than we originally budgeted for and then we originally planned, but we were trying to make a deal with these teachers, and the numbers were, were harder, so there's gonna be a little bit of an effect on the budget, which is not ideal right now, but it's the truth. So as you can see, we, we're about six, 6.5% the first year, that's the second year. Yeah, in the first year, it was a 7.4% increase. Yeah, in the first year, it was a 7.4% increase across the board, teachers. And there's a new salary scale that is listed in here that the teachers will have as part of their contracts and that we have shortened up some of the columns so that there's shorter columns, so that there's more opportunity for teachers to build careers here and to see the bottom of the columns. We've made it possible as a restitution on some other things. If you're interested in jumping columns, if you're interested in moving from column to column, and you go to attack that with aplomb, it's possible now to move two columns in a year if you get it done and announce in advance. And there's several other things that we've done that teachers asked for that we were able to accommodate within reason. All schools now have the same rights and responsibilities. Previously where schools were deployed, where we had CCSU employees deployed to different schools as CCSU employees instead of building employees, people were working in Cabot and Twinfield with different rights and responsibilities than the people that worked in the other buildings or the people that worked in the building that they were in. So all that's been rectified, we're catching up the salaries on the last two. The effect on Danville over the three years, in the first year is gonna be a 7.5% increase in the money, in the second year it's six and a half, and in the third year for 5.3. I have the salary scales if you wanna see them for the board. If you have any questions about that, let me know. Again, this is passed through several of the boards right now. I'm in the ratification process. CCA ratified this contract themselves at their initial in-service. And so this is ratified CCA and they're waiting on the boards, and we are the fourth board to go. And I would appreciate if you would pass this for me, pass this on behalf of the Danville School. Questions?
I will abstain from the vote.
I have an abstention from Dave Toll. Dave Toll tends to abstain from these votes.
For transparency, my wife works, has a CCSU contract, and she is the kitchen goddess.
So Shelley's not in this contract, she has her own contract with the other contract, the support contract, but he stays out of this conversation in general. So, what I'm looking for, if there's no questions from the board, I'd be looking for a motion to approve, to allow me to sign off on the CBA with the teacher contract from FY '26 through FY '28 as it's presented. I have a motion, I'll take it from Kay. I'll take a motion from Kay Friedy to approve the CBA teacher contract from FY '26 through FY '28. And a second will come from Tim. So a motion and a second to approve the CBA teacher contract from FY '26 through FY '28. Is there any further discussion? Any questions anywhere? All in favor, please say aye. Aye as well. One abstention from Dave Toll. That motion carries. Thank you for that. Next thing on the list is a part of the CBA. In 17.1 of the CBA, this is a long time pre-existing provision of the CBA. Each, our district and now each district in the CCSU has an opportunity, if the situation presents itself and there is money available, that we could offer an early retirement option or multiple early retirement options to teachers if we had them. Those provisions are all laid out in 17.1B of the CBA. I would ask if anybody's interested in acting on that this year. I don't think that we are. And so if we are not, we'll report back to the CCA and let them know that we are not interested in acting on that this year. We don't have any early retirement option available. Alright, move on from that. I'm gonna turn it over to Matt on policy C28. Policy C28 is printed on the agenda, it's printed. It was, this agenda came out more than 10 days in advance, we're legally allowed. This is a recommended policy from the state. And the policies recommended come from CCSU down to the boards, but they're not approved on behalf of this district by the SU Board. Instead, they're approved only at the local level. And so we discussed this transgender policy three, four years ago, and it's back open because there's been an update. I'll turn it over to Matt now.
Thank you. As Clayton said, this is a policy that was re-looked at. And I know that the SBA worked with their attorneys to make sure that it reflected what their intentions were and is aligned with state and federal law. And with that, there were very few word changes, really. So everything has just been, how do I want to say? Refreshed to make sure that it aligns still with goals, objectives, policies of the state. And we brought the policy to CCSU and they agreed that it made sense at this point to continue on with this recommended policy. And now we have the opportunity to bring it here to the local level and approve it here. So I'll turn it over to you folks for the opportunity to vote on that.
Policies in the packet, are there questions about the policy? Are there concerns about the policy? Anything on the policy? Anything in the public on the policy before we vote? It's on the, they should know because they saw the agenda, that's how they got here. So, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve for Danville School, policy C28, the updated transgender and gender non-conforming students policy. So moved by Tim Sampson, second by Kay Friedy. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving policy C28 transgender and gender non-conforming students? Please say aye. Everybody said aye? Did anybody say nay? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, Dave Toll. Motion carries. And then, we're gonna move down to now, we're gonna... We were asked to write a letter to the redistricting task force. I took a stab at it, Eric took a better stab at it this morning. I'm hopeful that we can have his letter put up onto the screen here so that people can see it. And this will be open for community discussion as well. So, this was the thing that came up in our last meeting. We wanna talk about what we had to say. Our approach was wait and see, our approach has been wait and see. It's not a strong enough approach. So, we took a stab at writing it, Eric took another stab at writing it. Can you share your screen, Eric? Do you have it, Matt? Let me find it. Yeah, give me a, I gotta, I'm just gonna dig it up. Give me a second, folks. Need my right page. Where did it go? Oh, I'm not doing the wrong thing, I'm searching for the wrong thing. It's gonna come up on the screen. Okay. Okay, I am... Here's the zoom, where's the share? There it is, share. Alright. Is it up there? Can I move it? No, I got something, I got something else up there. Can you see it? No. Share on the wrong screen. I'm gonna unshare. I'm gonna unshare, I'm gonna share this thing again, share. Eric, I'll ask you to read it. Does it come up? Come on now. Come on now. Here.
I'll just read this, I wrote this this morning. We've been struggling with this for the last couple of meetings. And to the board, this is mostly just my thoughts. So, I did not try to capture all of our voices, so please feel free to edit as much as you can. So, "Dear Task Force, today we, the Danville School Board, have accepted a petition from our voters to hold a public vote on the question of whether or not to close our high school, grades nine through 12, at the end of this academic year and become a choice town. Under Vermont statute, we will be holding a floor vote on this matter in less than 60 days. This petition is the direct result of great uncertainty due to Act 73 and your task force's mission. Between now and then, we will be holding informational meetings to help educate our voters on the options before them. We ask you then to help us, help them, and provide us with some clarity. It is the stance of the Danville School Board that this whole school, including its high school, is important to the town. However, we've been placed in a very awkward position as a high school. We are in the shadow of two larger private academies. All of the towns in our CTE region have the choice to attend those academies, paid for by the education fund. Our residents do not enjoy this privilege as we operate the only public high school in the CTE region. Our CTE region is very indicative of our geography and our regional ties to our neighboring towns, as evidenced by our neighbors to the west, Twinfield, indicating their desire to merge, if necessary, westward rather than eastward. We in Danville are demonstrably advocates and supporters of public education and have been for over 100 years. We believe a strong and viable public education is important and necessary. However, we are also not blind to the fact that the state has decided to treat the private academies in our region as de facto public schools without holding them to the public education standards. As such, our voters are trying to do the best thing they can for our children. The crux of this issue is the idea of districting Danville with the closest high school operating districts to meet class size restrictions set forth by Act 73 is completely untenable to our voters and unfair to our children. It will set forth a mass exodus to our neighboring towns that retain school choice for those that have the means, providing an inequitable result from this redistricting. The only tenable, equitable, and real options for us as a town are to be declared small by necessity and keep operating our high school with local control in a supervisory union, or failing that to allow us the same privilege as all of our surrounding towns to choose where our children go to high school. We are sensitive to the financial viability of this as any other board, and we understand the pressures. However, in order to keep Vermont the bucolic place that it is, we need to invest in making it feasible for people to live and thrive in the rural areas without making them second-class citizens. We are at risk of making a very reactionary decision that will change this town considerably in unforeseen ways. Additionally, we remain beholden to the whims of your task force and more broadly, the state legislature. With a lack of certainty or clarity around what will happen to a school like ours, which is in a remarkably unique situation in the state, we are forced to assume and plan for the worst-case scenario and do everything in our power to prevent it. And so our ask to you is to give us clarity. Recognize that we present a unique and difficult situation in the broader scope of redistricting. Put great thought into what the future of public education should be in this part of Vermont, and then please convey that vision to us in a timely manner. With many thanks, the Danville School Board."
Any comments on that from the board? Take it back.
I think this does a pretty good job of laying out some of the challenges that we're dealing with here. And I do have a couple of issues with what is stated here if we're gonna be signing off on this as a board. One is, it will set forth a mass exodus. I don't think we know what it will do.
Do we fear that it will?
So, I think we, you know, we fear what will happen beyond this. We have no way of knowing, but we are concerned about yada, 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 yada. We're concerned about other things too, of course, though, as well. So, you know, basically, people have made decisions based on what they assumed the educational possibilities were in a region. It could upend people in multiple directions. And a community. And then there was another one, "As such, our voters..." Something, 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 this is whatever. "As such, our voters are trying to do the best thing they can for our children." I think potentially, our town is still trying to do the best we can for our children. I'm not sure if you are only really speaking about folks who have added their names to the petition or not. That is a subset of our community currently. So I think there's a little bit in here that feels a bit too weighted toward the idea that it's some sort of deficit to operate a high school. Oh, no. Okay, I just hope that that's not what is communicated here because I feel like, you know, it is our...
So somebody with access to edit this thing should be editing it on the fly because we're here to do this, we can only do this in public. So we're doing this tonight.
Where are you seeing that as such? Like what paragraph are you in?
I am in, I'm at the end of paragraph number three. Yeah.
Yeah, I think what, I think the important paragraph is the fifth one. I think the important paragraph is the fifth one. It says, "The only tenable, equitable, and lawful, will allow me to keep operating our high school." I think that statement needs to just maybe be said again again. I think the dialogue needs for clarity. But I think when we put it here, our ask is to give us clarity, recognize. But I think somewhere in that last, where we're saying what we're seeking, where the request is that we be, we be declared small by necessity.
I'm gonna sit in here.
Because I think that we outline all of the struggles really well, and I just wanna make sure that the, like, the proposed outcome is highlighted. Also, I think you can just hit, I think you can just change that will to a may. Cause I'm not, that's exodus.
I don't like the reference to, "We do not enjoy the privilege." And a reference to second-class citizen. On the back.
No, I'm trying to catch up, I just, I'm lucky to have a computer still on. Somebody, you wanna sit here and make the edit? While they say them to you?
We should add, instead of trying to become a school of choice, we need to focus on a school that is chosen. I can say it again. When you're ready.
What you're saying is that...
No, no, that's fine.
So, so you said it may, and then what'd you want us?
I just think that the, that first sentence that we're looking for to be declared small by necessity, keep operating.
Yeah.
I think that, that is the ask, so I think it needs to appear again in that last paragraph.
In the last paragraph?
Yeah. Where we said, "We're asking for clarity." I think, you know, we said, ideally, we're asking to be...
Ideally, okay.
You know, to be recognized for that. Additionally, we're asking for clarity. Because the goal of the committee is to, the redistricting is to cut down on schools in Vermont. You know, we need to, we need to clarify where that all is going.
Well phrased?
Yep.
Maybe you can just stop after, "There's people for people to live and thrive in the rural areas."
Yep. I was trying to look at this morning, I'm sorry.
What about, "Enjoy the privilege"?
I think we need to get rid of the...
Right. You could say, "You do not have the same opportunity," and still. But without making it sound like we're missing out.
So, I just said, "Do not have this privilege," or you know, I need to kind of all help?
Get rid of it.
Just say, "We operate the only public high school in this."
Perfect.
Yeah. I've been working on Mac too long, I'm sorry.
Right? On somebody else's computer?
On a giant screen.
No Prime TV.
Yeah.
No pressure. Also, instead of trying to become a school of choice, focus on become a school of chosen.
Words like that.
That could be a tagline. That could be in the last paragraph or the last sentence.
What do you mean by that?
Instead of being a school of... Instead of being a school of choice, we need to focus on being a school that is chosen, so people want to come here.
I don't, I think that that's a true statement for us. I don't know if that's, that's part of the proposal. I know when we talked about drafting this letter, we had talked about not wanting to infringe on other towns around us, their own choice. We didn't, we didn't want to sort of be like, "you should just send everybody here."
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Because we just wanted to make sure that they got, they got their own set, you know?
I'll save it for another.
It's a, it is a great...
It's a good slogan.
It's a great slogan, and you're right, that's what we want. I just don't know that I...
I'm starting to forget what to put in there. Katie, did you have any other edits that we didn't make? I'm so sorry.
I'm still seeing the as such thing.
Yeah. Where? Here?
Oh, yes, okay. So what, uh, our town, our town is?
Yeah.
I'm going to make it up. I'm just trying to... With, uh, anything? I did it, did you?
Those of you with opinions out there, how's that sound, the timber of that? This is open to, this is open to discussion, so, yeah.
Moral and ethical obligation of public high school option in this part of the state. This board is in a unique position to make that point, where other schools who may have drafted similar letters can't make that second point. It's not true that we have a draft, right? So I would just encourage you to consider that, and then maybe add some part about an obligation on the part of the state, but they're continuing to be a public high school option, because we are not, that's a bad, small by necessity, and not ready to continue through Act 73, particularly a public high school option for a big part of the state over there. And also, I'm going to, I'm going to make the closest attention to what happens in this part of the state. So I would encourage you to consider that.
You put at the end of the second to last paragraph, it would be a place to ask.
Um, yeah. You mentioned that we're legal, that the state has decided to treat the private academies as de facto, but we...
Like there, or do you want me to put it further down?
How would that paragraph be always a legal option for us if the town requires small by necessity and keep operating our high school?
Yeah, and do like a full stop.
Full stop. Yeah, somehow the work of our government, you know, to operate the only public high school in our region.
Yes.
I mean, the other option is to put it in the second to last paragraph, where you could say, this is part where you say, "which is in a remarkably unique situation in the state," and, you know, you put it there.
We could, I mean, you hammer on that.
We could also hammer on that.
Yeah.
...in the second paragraph, if you don't understand, when you say, "as we operate the only public high school in the CTE region," I don't know if something could be plugged in there. "We believe that the state has a legal and ethical obligation to consider the fact that..."
Correct. So it has that we, that we are bound to...
In the second paragraph. And then I kind of have another thing I think you guys get there, sorry.
The state has... An obligation. State has an obligation, is that...
Moral and ethical, I don't know, that's a...
I need to stand up. So it doesn't feel like the person wants to... If you want things to go your way.
Sorry, Allison, there's something else.
Oh, so if you are ready, I can leave. Okay. I was just going to say, on the fifth paragraph, possible consideration, because there's so much unknown, and who knows what's going to go along with the vote. I don't know if it makes sense to say something like, "we request assurance that the town will have an option or be involved in the conversation if the school is closed." Because you say, "for failing that to allow us the same privilege as all of our surrounding towns to choose where our children go to high school." I just don't know where your choices are going to land if redistricting happens and Act 73 does move forward, so I just didn't know if there was a later saying, "we request assurance that the town will be able to have a vote or a say in that conversation." Maybe you're saying, with that last sentence, I just think it'd be nice to say, "we want to hear from you that you will have a say in that for consideration."
I'm not necessarily sure if you're going to want to share that, but if you're going to, you want to... You want the assurance? To, to assure us this handled?
Maybe that's a better turn of phrase.
It says, "you're too small," and boom, this is what you're doing. You kind of would say, "you kind of can't, you're dumb." I'm basically trying to say, if there is a situation where you say, "we don't care if you need to operate here, it's not happening," I don't see this happening, but I think, "you're too, you're too small, something's got to give. We want to make sure that, okay, at that point, I'm going to step in and say, 'this is what we have, the town will request, compared to this is what's going to happen.'" I don't, again, maybe it's not necessarily...
Oh, like, move on behind this, would you?
But we want to choose, so if you decide to shut us down, depending on where the, where the vote goes.
Do you have the date of the vote in the letter?
Sixty days, they have.
Uh, yes, I can actually put that in there.
Yeah, that would be good, and I know this is probably a very important thing to happen. I love that's going to help things along.
I guess I'm just trying to make sure it's very clear that we, if people agree, if people agree, that the town is requesting, we would like to have a vote, as to, you know, what's happening in there. Are we in a position that we're going to opt for people to, you know, if you don't, you know, if the vote goes. Anyway, that was just...
I think that the fact that we are in a, that's what I was trying to, we're trying to have all of this conversation anyways. This, this particular unknown, that we're being told that if we go into a district, our vote's going to be 300 out of 4,000, so one, one-third of 1% as opposed to getting a vote of all of us. And the assurance that we have is, we were, we were told that that assurance is not going to, is not going to occur, and that's what really sparked this petition. So I don't know if we can necessarily say it, but I think, I hope this measures our intent. You guys want to roll with this? I don't know how to fit Allison's thing in there. Past local control.
Yeah.
I think local control sums up what you're saying.
Any, any other changes?
So this is consensus. You guys agree with this? Everybody says, "yes, I agree with this," and then we're good. A murmur of consensus, what we were on?
Vote on it?
We can vote on it if you'd like. I would take a motion to approve this letter to be sent to the redistricting task force, then. So motion in a second. I'll sign on behalf, all in favor of this action. Please say aye.
Aye.
So we'll send, I'll send this letter off to the redistricting task force tomorrow, and amongst my things that I'm doing.
It needs a signature.
I'll sign it and send it off. Yeah.
Yeah. There's some, there's still some formatting to be done on it. Something that could be just hammered out. The format. Do we all want to sign it?
We can certainly all sign it. We can get, set a DocuSign up real quick. So let's do that. Let's all sign it. All right, so that's that one. We have left community outreach regarding redistricting, and I think we're scrapping the survey. What's our situation here? So first, community outreach on redistricting. This is now community outreach on the vote itself. We've laid out some of the things that we're going to do. I've talked to IT about getting a page up. We have to push the fact that we're voting and make sure that everybody knows that, get in a car and bring three Danville residents with you and knock on your neighbor's door, regardless of what your vote is. But we can't have this vote be 75 people deciding what we do. This vote's got to be, like, the highest number that we were getting was 750 during the pandemic, but we need to get hundreds of people in the room regardless. Whatever the vote ends up being, we need to get hundreds of people in the room so that we know what the people think.
At the risk of being the very bad guy on the board here, are two informational meetings going to be enough?
I think that we start with the one in November, and the one in November is the one where we print the warning. After the one in November, we can make that determination again.
Okay.
There's a couple of things that we need to clarify with the lawyer about whether, whether or not what Eric Hutchins said or what Bruce Malindi said, that this is only advisory. I had something similar said to me by the VSB that this is, that this may not be a vote that you, that the, that the town itself can make, that they can advise us to, toward an action, we don't have to take it. So then we might be able to have the same vote again at town meeting. I don't really know, but we just have some clarification there.
Okay.
In November, we can decide if a second informational meeting might be necessary, but the holiday's going to be in the way.
Yeah, and November's tough. That's why I was thinking, might want to do something in October, just...
Throw me a meeting day.
Oh, I don't know.
I have a limitless, I have a limitless spare time for meetings.
Again, at the risk of being a bad guy, I don't know if everybody else agrees.
Get your calendars out, people. Save me seats.
Can I, or, or we just need this big of a space, because that's a public, as far as, okay, volleyball game, something like that, in here? Or is it cafeteria? I think we need bigger, I just don't know, maybe this size, or cafeteria's fine.
I, I would think that we would need the cafeteria. I think that this one was big because it got pushed out, but I think standing room only's fine. Need some spots. All right, calendars out. Am I bleeding? I'm bleeding? I'm bleeding. It's not me, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm bleeding. Give me, give me, give me two minutes.
Boy, when a school board chair falls on the sword, that's it.
Back to a second... So I can do, who's got a day that they can't do? I can do 21. I can do 22. I can do 20, but I have a CCSU board meeting, so I can't do 20. Can't do 23. I don't think I can do 22, VSB meetings. Do 22, I can do 22, 21.
21.
21, 21.
22, that way it's on a Wednesday, and other ones are on Tuesdays.
Okay, 22, 22 is a Wednesday? Informational meeting on a Wednesday?
Well, I guess the, what venue would be?
22, the cafeteria?
If you can steer it around a playoff, I certainly would.
Are those games scheduled? The playoff, the playoffs are already scheduled? Because we have good fields. Okay, so informational meeting on the 22nd. Can I also ask you guys to come back and have a special meeting after that to clear up that minute situation that I've got?
Yeah.
Okay. So informational meeting on the 22nd, directly after that, is a special meeting to specifically clear up the minutes errors that were made on September 2nd, and that's our only agenda item. Is that okay? At 6:00.
Clayton, question?
Yes, ma'am.
The December 2nd meeting, that would be immediately after the legislative maps are due, the committee maps are due on the 1st. Would that be, A, information that would be helpful enough? And B, does that give enough turnaround time if that information is really helpful to be able to digest it and include that in the meeting? Or do we need another day or two think time? Like, would we even have it communicated from that committee?
The last time we had this question, we came after we were sitting in a meeting when H454 was being voted on, and we sat there forever, and when the meeting ended and the minute we left, we got the vote. So probably we won't have time on that one. So are you saying that we should move the informational meeting from the 2nd to the 3rd?
Essentially.
Let's move the informational meeting from the 2nd to the 3rd. I think Matt might be busy on the 3rd. But that's okay. Yeah. The informational meetings are not, they don't take a quorum. If it's just an informational meeting, and you don't have to be there, we can pass all our information and take our public comments. So we're going to do an informational on the 22nd plus minutes. At 6 o'clock, we're going to do our regular November 4th meeting, and that meeting will be, we'll have informational in the front of it, and then we'll, we'll look at December the 2nd for our regular meeting, and we'll move the informational meeting there to December the 3rd. And we'll push that information out ASAP.
At 6:00.
At 6:00, 6:00, 6:00, 6:00, and 6:00. If that's okay with everybody? Is that okay with everybody? Great. And community survey on high school, we're, we're tabling that for now, right?
Yeah.
All right. From where we stand right here, I'm back to another session of public input. If anybody's not talked out and wants to go again, we're open for public input. Hi, Allison. How are you? Great.
Do you want, have you just been surveying? Anything? Okay. Natalie and I had spoken this time. Okay. I understand...